It's 12 o'clock and time to begin. Welcome, everyone, to our council work session. And first up, I think we're going to have a conversation about City Hall. I would just say for the benefit of the audience and all of us here in this room and around the table, we are adjusting to this, having our meetings in Harris Hall and trying to get our sound adjusted properly and all the other things adjusted properly. I'm guessing there'll have to be probably a few more adjustments before we get it just right, but just so you know. All right, City Manager, you want to begin the conversation about the City Hall?
Thank you, Mayor, very much, and I'll turn it over to Kristi in just half a moment, but this is just our continuing conversation of City Hall that's really been going on for a number of years, and we're moving closer and closer towards an option and a solution. And we're really hoping that we can have a great conversation today. I know the Subcommittee has been working really hard as well, and we look forward to the conversation and actually at least one more conversation or potentially a couple of conversations between now and the end of the calendar year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kristi and her team to lead us on the conversation.
Thank you, John. I'm Kristi Hammett, Central Services Director. And Jason, Dedrick, and I today will walk you through an update of, you know, kind of what John was just saying, what the Subcommittee has been doing. We do have other staff resources available that will help answer questions that you might have.
Can I ask if people can hear out there? Just, no, I thought that you're going to have to...
A little closer?
Yeah, really close.
Okay.
That's better.
And so we'll go ahead and get started, and at any point you can feel free to stop us and ask questions. And the point today is to bring you up to date on the three options that we're evaluating, give you more information around the financing strategies that we have moving forward, and to get some input from you on what will help you in moving forward and making a decision.
All right. Thank you, Kristi. My name is Jason Dedrick with the City Manager's Office, here to give you an update on the Subcommittee's process thus far. As a reminder, that Subcommittee consists of Councillors Clark, Pryor, and Zelenka. So for today, we'll bring you up to speed on their work recently. We will bring back some of the information they've been working on and look forward to our next steps from here. You'll want to be mindful that we'll be asking for your feedback on the information we'll be presenting today, as well as your feedback on the process from here to your decision. So keep that in mind during the presentation. We've got kind of our mantra up there that we've been using at staff level and also the Subcommittee. A thoughtful decision will be the right decision. Pick one of the options, and we will work with you to make it great. What this really embodies is the fact that we feel there are three very good options out there. All of them can be made great, and so hopefully that helps to put the decision into some context. So as a reminder of our values, we're going to be talking a bit in more detail about a couple of these, but just wanted to remind you of the big picture, which is that we have these five guiding values that more or less have been with the project throughout its duration. Those include stewardship, identity, participation, simplicity, and Eugene at 200, which is really how will we look back on this process 50 years from now, and what will we say about how it went and how well we planned for the future. So the process summary as of recently, there have been three Subcommittee meetings this fall, two since you last met at your last work session. Basically, what that group has been doing is obtaining information from staff via our own staff reports and kind of question-and-answer dialogue or staff bringing information back at meetings. We've been discussing the various criteria that are involved in the process and kind of those key components. I will point you to this document, this comparison of City Hall options. We are not going to talk about this much today, but this is your resource going forward as you move towards your decision. So we've been talking about a lot of the key criteria in that document with the Subcommittee. The Subcommittee has also reached what we'll call conclusions. You know, conclusions might be too strong of a word, but head nodding around the room on some key components, and that's what we'll present today. And then they've also been helping with what the final decision-making framework will be. How do we bring all this information together in a way that helps for a good decision and one that everyone can feel good about? So at your last work session on October 22nd, we asked for your feedback on those five values. We heard lots of good discussion there. We also heard a lot of discussion about consolidation, and so we took a cue from you and had the Subcommittee spend a lot of time talking about consolidation and a couple of these values in particular that you had comments on. As a reminder, we have two-site options and three choices at the current City Hall site, choices either to rebuild or build new, and then the e-website. So these Subcommittee conclusions or kind of findings of fact that the Subcommittee has made, first is our funding for the project, and that our target is $15 million. I'll talk a bit more about this in a minute, but there was a lot of discussion around this, questions, answers from staff, and having the Subcommittee feel comfortable that this is our target right now for what staff feels is possible on this project, so $15 million being that guideline. Talked a lot about consolidation priorities at the Subcommittee level the last two meetings, and really what are some logical groupings of the various work units that are currently scattered around downtown. So first and foremost, Mayor and Council, City Manager's Office being part of that core that should be kept together and should be the first priority for locating in whatever new facility. Shortly thereafter, maybe even 1A instead of 2, are Central Services admin functions and finance functions, also seen by the Subcommittee as core functions perhaps that should travel in tandem with Mayor and Council and City Manager's Office. A third unit that makes sense to keep together is planning and development, which is in the atrium building, and Public Works admin and engineering, which is in the Wells Fargo Building. These are units that have a lot of contact with the public and where there may be a need for face-to-face interaction with staff, and so that would be a reason to have those groups travel together and potentially be in the new City Hall facility. And then finally, the remaining services that are around downtown currently, Human Resources, RISK, Municipal Court, and Information Services, or ISD, would be a little further down on the list, in part because three of those units are in 10-year leases currently in other facilities downtown, and ISD has a lot of hardware and other things in the library building that tie them there at least for, you know, the short term. So those are seen by the Subcommittee as work units that could potentially come into City Hall if there's organizational efficiency to be gained by doing that.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
So can you say again who's in the library?
Library is Central Services admin, finance, and ISD.
And the library staff.
And library staff, yes.
Of course. And we're not leasing those, those are city Eugene facilities, right?
We're not leasing it, but we share in the operational costs for the facility.
So are we going to be answering questions as we go along, or would you like to finish the presentation and then have us ask questions?
Why don't you let us finish the presentation, and that'll just be easy, I think, for us.
Thank you.
That was my weakness.
Another item that the Subcommittee has talked about is phasing, and we've hinted at that a little bit, but with that target budget of what's realistic now, $15 million, it's clear that phasing will have to be a part of the project. So thinking about phasing as funding allows, but also noting an important moment for the Subcommittee was realizing that all of these, all of the three options can accommodate full consolidation. So both options on the City Hall site and the e-website can accommodate that full consolidation. And what the Subcommittee views as full consolidation are these four points that are listed here. They do not consider some of the functions that are already located elsewhere, such as police, or Public Works, and parks and open space that are out at Roosevelt, or Fire 911. Those are in dedicated facilities that need to be more or less where they are. So when we talk about full consolidation, that's what the Subcommittee means. And finally, there's been discussion about the e-web proposal. What staff and the Subcommittee have been working off of is the current information that's been supplied by e-web staff and approved by the Board. So that's the information that we're currently working with. So a quick recap on that funding piece in terms of how the $15 million's been arrived at by staff. The balance of our facility reserve fund is just short of $8 million. Telecom fund has about $2 million, and then other sources that haven't yet been identified, although there's a long list of possibilities totaling just over $5 million. So that's how we get to the $15 million. Although those other sources have not yet been identified, staff is confident that those funds, or relatively confident that those funds will be accomplished. So important to note that that's how we get to that number. So on consolidation, here's putting some square footage needs on the various priorities that we've already presented. Mayor and Council, City Manager's Office, 20,000 to 25,000 square feet needed. Finance and Central Services admin at 10,000. The atrium and Wells Fargo Building, staff in both of those buildings, about 80,000 square feet, so that's a pretty big chunk there. And then the other services there, RISK, Municipal Court, Human Resources, ISD, are about 45,000 square feet. This gives you a sense of the relative magnitude of those various groups. So when we start adding that up and talk about what our needs are regarding consolidation, here's kind of how it all builds together. Got that Mayor and City Council, CMO piece at 25,000, about 10,000 there, Central Services admin and finance. Add in the atrium and Wells Fargo, which gets us to about 110,000, 115,000, and then that field group there gets us to about 160,000 square feet needed. Gives you a sense of what the different amounts may be needed as we look at phasing on the So talking in a little more detail about that budget and what it means, here's a kind of a quick sketch of the project features that could be accomplished for that $15 million target. On the existing site, under the rebuild option, and it's important to note that that is a rebuild more significant than a renovation, it's not just adding some paint, doing some cosmetic changes. A rebuild is a significant process. So as part of that rebuild, we'd have that core finished space for City Council, City Manager's Office, retain the Council Chamber in some way, shape, or form. We would have just over 30,000 square feet in shelled space available for future phases, and we would retain 90 to 100 parking spaces. Under the build-new option, we would have that same finished space. The site would essentially be, the entire site would be made ready for future development, so there would be vacant land on the site that would be available for future additions. There would not be any parking included. And then that $15 million on the e-website would be for, would provide up to 58,000 square feet of finished space in the north and south buildings. Land for future addition would be included in that, and it would also include parking. So when we look at those needs as they relate to our budget and see how that builds up, here's a quick sketch of that. There's our target budget there of $15 million, running up the left side of the chart there in millions of dollars. Now you can see the legend. So that first piece, Mayor and City Council, City Manager's Office, can be accomplished on our new site either under rebuild or build new for about $15 million. For a little bit more, Central Services admin and finance can be brought in. As a reminder, the Subcommittee felt like those two together may be seen as the core to move forward with initially. Bringing in PDD and Public Works admin and engineering, that is, as you recall, a large square footage, so fairly large budgetary need to bring those in. When we look at the e-website, bringing in Mayor and City Council, City Manager, as well as Central Services admin and finance can be accomplished for approximately $10 million. We'll call these kind of soft costs at this point, but it's a ballpark of where that would be. So obviously, less than the $15 million target. What happens next when you think about adding PDD and Public Works, that obviously goes beyond the target budget. The cost is about the same as it would be on the current City Hall site, because in addition to using the existing buildings, you would likely need to build a new building as well. And so important to consider that the group is, the Subcommittee has been interested in having these work units travel together, rather than, as you can see, there's a small section of PDD and Public Works that in theory could be accomplished on the e-website within the $15 million, but trying to keep those groups together as much as possible, rather than splitting them apart as part of a phasing process. So we've talked a lot about consolidation and funding. It's very important to note that these are just one expression of the many, of the five values that are on the project. So we've talked, under stewardship, we've talked about today about long and short-term fiscal responsibility, and under simplicity, we've talked about consolidation. As you can see, there are other expressions of other values here. So what's important to note is while funding and consolidation may be important for you or for some of you, other values may be just as important or more important. That's kind of looking ahead to your discussion here prior to the end of the year, to weigh those values against each other as part of your decision process. So next steps from here, the Subcommittee will be meeting again next Monday, November 19th. They will likely be working on how we frame up this discussion for your meetings before the end of the year, what the decision-making process might look like. The Subcommittee is recommending that there be an additional council workshop sometime between now and your next work session on December 12th, an opportunity in a non-work session format to talk about some of these larger values on the project that they haven't delved into as much. The reason for that is not wanting to duplicate the discussion, to have it once at the council table. So their recommendation is to try to find a time to do that, potentially in early December. Also, the possibility of a public forum, either on our normal public forum nights, November 19th, next Monday, or December 10th, or possibly a special time for that, and I'll talk a bit more about that in just a second. And then what's currently scheduled as council work session on December 12th, hopefully when you could move towards a decision on this process. What we're looking for you, for, from you for today, questions and discussions about the Subcommittee's work that we presented, any specific tasks that you would like to send back for the Subcommittee to work on at their final meeting, and also to address the idea of a public forum, not only whether or not you feel it's necessary, but also if so, what specific question or questions should be directed to the public to respond to, or what components of this process would you want the public to respond to in a public forum? So that's it for our presentation, and the rest of the time is for questions.
Let's go through this, give a little feedback, just to say about the sound, we're getting a little feedback. Let's take one question at a time of the three that you put there. Jason, so the first one was questions and discussion about the Subcommittee conclusions. So if anybody has any comments about the Subcommittee's conclusions, now's the time to make that comment. I saw a, is it your hand up, Betty?
Oh, it's about, no, not about that.
Okay. Chris?
I think that Jason and Kristi have done a great job of summarizing the work we've done, we've done so far.
Try backing up just a tad.
How's that? Is that good? I have a good voice, anyway, so.
No, I was just bouncing, that's what I was trying to...
Bouncing? Okay. And I think that really a context we've been working on is there's kind of the objective, measurable pieces of this process, and then there are kind of the subjective or more value, policy-driven elements. And I think the Committee has really come down that we can do a lot of work for you in processing, concluding, formatting, all of this objective material, and I think that's a lot of what we've done here. But you cannot really talk about the values and the policy aspects in a Subcommittee. It really requires us to do that as a group, because it is a much more loose, I don't want to say emotional, but it is a subjective element that you can't do in a Subcommittee. It really requires all of us to talk about it. At the present time, as Jason showed you, every single one of these options would work and can be made to work. So we couldn't go into a Subcommittee and say, oh, something's going to fall off the list after we've had a chance to look at it more closely. There would need to be some adjustments and some tinkering, but as you can see, all three can be made to work. One of the important objective things, at least I think that we have reached, is you can't eat this sandwich all in one bite. It's going to have to be done in phases. All three plans will accommodate a phasing, but there's a little variation in terms of how that phasing works. And that then is a matter of what does the council as a body want to do in terms of its phasing discussion, and what you get for your money. Probably the last thing I would say is the $15 million we have set is, to the degree we can, a hard amount, and we'll talk about that later on in terms of why that needs to be a hard amount. But if one of the options said for a little bit more money, you could achieve Central Services administration and finance in one place as a consolidation logic, we should at least be able to talk about that, if it was not a huge amount, but some small amount that could allow us to achieve an efficiency. But I just wanted to say, we are really focusing on trying to give you the objective elements as well organized and talked through, but that at some point, we as a body are going to have to talk about the other entire side, which is the values aspect.
And you consider, you consider a, whether or not it's important for it to be in its current location in the core of downtown, or a little further out in downtown in the e-website, is you consider that a value in your discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I've got Counsel Far, Clark, and Zelenka. Counsel Far.
A question first, maybe a little out of order, but it's important that I understand this. December 12th is the next council work session on that, and you said deliberating toward a decision. No decisions are anticipated for December 12th, though.
I think that what the Subcommittee has talked about is that purely if December 12th were to be the only meeting, it may be difficult for that, simply because the need to have that discussion around values and that that could be better facilitated in a, more of a non-work session format. So were there to be, I think their feeling was were there to be that additional session, perhaps in early December, that it is quite possible that a decision could be reached at that work session?
This only affects 12.5% of the people sitting on this side of this table. But that will be my last council meeting. So it's important, I guess, that everybody understands that whoever you all choose to replace me should obviously be a part of that discussion, at least beginning at that point. Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo what Chris said about the process that we've gone through so far and kind of framing the decision points that we've created. I also want to be very thankful to all the staff folks who've come for all the Subcommittee meetings and who've done so much work and support. It's really been pretty amazing. Thank you, guys. I would also say then that that, there are a couple of pieces that the Subcommittee still has work to do on with staff, but the, for me, anyway, the real questions involve the larger application of vision to the values discussion. So in other words, you can't escape, as the Mayor brought up tangentially here just a moment ago, that a City Hall, new, current place or otherwise, certainly affects what our downtown becomes from the next 20 or 50, 20 to 50 years. So I think it's important for us to have the larger context questions, as well as the kind of, you know, comparative value questions. And I don't really want to rush this conversation either, but I know that there are those who would like us to get to the point quickly, so. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Great job summarizing hours of work that we've done. I think this really clearly talks about what we've been, what we've been talking about. And again, to talk about, or to reiterate what Chris said, we were trying to divide up the subjective and the objective parts of this discussion, and we focused more on the objective parts, like square feet and costs and things like that, what you can do. And so we purposely are not going to make a recommendation to the group, because we all believe that this group needs to make that decision as a whole. Having it made somewhere else and then, and then come back here isn't going to work. We've seen that happen before. So this is where we'll make the recommendation.
I got a couple of points. On the phasing parts of this, the question, it begs the question of should we do that now, or should we do that later? And if we do it now, we have to come up with, we have to come up with a process to get another $30 million or so in order to do that full consolidation package that we're talking about, which included planning, development, and Public Works, at Central Services and Finance, as well as the Mayor and City Manager's Office. So that's, that's another question we have besides the site question. And one of the interesting things about this is that this, there are multiple values here that we have to weigh against each other, and it's not just a cost issue, for me, anyway. One of the things I do as, in my professional life, is I work with people to do energy master plans, and we have multiple different projects they have to pick from in order to figure out which ones make the most sense for their particular entity. One of the groups I've been working with recently, just finished with, was in Orange County, not the most liberal place on the planet, but Orange County Irvine Ranch Water District. And we did a process where we, we pulled out of them what their evaluation criteria for decision-making was. And, and, you know, at the beginning of this process, that process, they kept saying, we, our bottom-line focus is cost, 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 cost. And then when we actually pulled out of the senior management of the organization what their criteria were for making an evaluation criteria, they said cost, they said risk and uncertainty, they said, you know, operational impacts and environmental impacts. And then after they protested their bottom-line focus, they only put, out of a possible 100 points, we make them digger up the five different evaluation criteria by points, and if you had a possible 100 points. And cost, you'd think from the rhetoric would have been about 80 points, but it only ended up being 40 by consensus. So cost is very important, but it's not the overriding thing, even in, even when people have the rhetoric about being cost. The other values that here, or evaluation criteria, the other values that we have here are equally, if not more important, things like the stewardship and the environmentally responsible design and operation and the identity pieces. Those things are the things that we need to talk about and flesh out more and figure out how they play and how important they are.
Have we flipped on the values, then?
Okay, Claire?
So I'm hoping to have a meeting with a member of city staff that's been offered to me to get up to speed on this, because I don't have a lot of the details, but I just had a couple of short detailed questions, and then just on the build-new option, curious about why the no parking, if anyone's able to speak to that.
Well, I think the cost of the construction doesn't include parking in it. Clearly, we would have enough space on the lot, the whole city block, to be able to add parking, but it's not included as part of the project cost.
So the heading of that slide was project features for $15 million, and for $15 million, we don't build parking.
Right. It's not included in that, but we would obviously need to address.
That would be another phase or part of the project. Okay.
Or rely on the parking crosses.
Crosses street.
And this may be getting too into the weeds, but with the potential of the e-web building, is that right now looking at a lease situation or a purchase?
It's a purchase.
And then I have some comments about public forum, but I'll wait till we're considering that one.
George Brown?
Thanks. I've got a few questions. The $16 million target cost figure says other sources would be, you know, not yet identified, $5.3 million. Is there like a, can you give us some kind of a rough, general idea of where this might come from?
I'm going to let Sue, our Finance Director, Sue Cutter-Joress, speak to that.
You want to come up? Oh, you've got a mic.
I think it's a TV mic.
Yep, it was on. Who wants to just come on here?
Well, as Sue's getting settled, I will say there was a attachment in a packet, an earlier packet, I think it may have been from June, that identified some of those alternate sources, and we can make, get you another copy of that as well, but I'll let Sue go into a little bit more detail.
Right. So there are a number of places we would look, potentially, most of them one-time sources of funding for the potential City Hall. And when we say that we're fairly confident we'd be able to get to $15 million, it doesn't mean $15 million is sitting there just waiting for us to take it and use it. So you're going to have to think about this project, prioritize it over the next few years, and look for opportunities. And the places where those opportunities could occur are when we have, for instance, our marginal beginning working capital each year, if there, if there's additional dollars available, leftover from the prior year, we could potentially dedicate some of those. We also talked about dedicating a portion of the general capital projects, the transfer that you make on SB 1. So the... Okay, sorry. I'm echoing. So is that better? Okay. For the last dozen years or so, you really haven't put any of your, or very much of your general capital projects budget into City Hall, because we've been on this path of doing something different with it. And so the idea would be that it would seem appropriate for you to allocate some of that funding towards the City Hall project for a few years. And then we would look at other sources, like potentially selling assets. We've done that in the past, for instance, 858 Pearl, when we sold that, we put that money into the facility reserve. So we would look for those kinds of opportunities, and whatever funding, or other funding sources we could identify in the meantime. I did give the Subcommittee an example of how we went about doing that with the library project, and that actually happened over a number of years as we kind of developed the plan. So I would anticipate we may not know everything when we embark down the project path about how we would pay for the $15 million, but we would continue to work on that diligently as we go through the planning process.
Let's see. I'm looking, I'm looking at the consolidation needs, and I see 160,000 square feet, so, you know, if we were going to put it back, I mean, that would be consolidate all the departments. And I'm just wondering, is that just like a current usage, or does that take into account, wow, you know, 50 years from now, probably all the departments will need some more space, because the city's going to grow? And I'm thinking in 50 years, we might be, you know, in a similar position of like, oh, jeez, we got to move them out again somewhere else. So I'm just wondering, is that kind of allowing for, for... So I'm just wondering, is that kind of allowing for reasonable growth in the next 25 to 50 years?
I'll let Mike Pennwell, our facilities manager, respond to that.
Those numbers were put together using a combination of current net leased space, net occupied space, and a factor for moderate amount of growth out to 20 years, plus a factor to represent gross space, like mechanical roads, precipitation, hallways, all that sort of thing. They're not meant to be exact spot-on, they're, you know, rough estimates. And generally, we find that 20 years is a useful horizon, which in this day and age might even be a bit long because of the way that technology is changing the use of space. And so we anticipate variables that will come in to play well beyond 20 years, and that 20, the numbers given are a reasonable 20-year projection.
Okay, thank you. And then the site cost comparison, I'm looking at the, on the E-Web site, does that, does that include the purchase and remodeling of the property?
Yes. Acquisition and then remodeling the space, and it's 58,000 square feet plus land to develop on.
Okay. And then looking at that same site cost comparison chart, I see that HR and the municipal court and RISC and ISD are left out entirely. Does that mean that they are not anticipated to be consolidated with all the other ones at E-Web?
Well, it wouldn't be...
Would remain off-site somewhere?
They would remain in their leased space. So three of those, the human resources office, RISC services, and municipal court are all in long-term leases right now, and then...
10 years.
Yeah, 10 years plus in some cases. And then information services is in a really good location on the fourth floor of the library that works well for them functionally to serve the city. And so that 45,000 square feet that we're referring to there could be blocked out in chunks as we get to that phase of the project, so it doesn't have to be all the 45,000 at one time.
Right. So they could be added later. There would be enough room at the E-Web facility, but it'd just be a matter of when the leases run out, the current leases run out.
Right.
If we have enough money to move them over there when that happens.
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns in the future, but...
And also because all three sites have land that will allow for additional building, it's important to note, again, that even though it's not shown here, all three sites could accommodate that full consolidation.
Yeah. Okay. I guess that's all my questions are right now. Thank you.
Right on time. George Poling?
Well, actually, Claire and George asked some of the same questions that I had, and I was a little concerned when he started talking about a 20-year horizon, and we're talking about a building that hopefully will last 100 years, so thanks for the explanation on that. And I'm sure there's technology available where we could, whatever site we land on, that we can construct it in such a way that it's easier to add on at a later time, whether laterally or if we go up with it. So we need to keep that in mind. And then also, another thing we need to keep in mind as we're going about this process and this discussion is that we need to safeguard the facility reserves. Because the first, I think, four or five years I was on the council, millions of dollars were pulled out of the facility reserves and sent elsewhere and not for facility-type functions because of the budgetary problems that we were facing back then. I realize that we're in really tight times now, and we're already talking about an additional 200,000-plus coming out of our budget for social services. So cuts are going to have to be made from somewhere, and, you know, it's going to be a hard sell to cut back library hours or reduce police or fire, whatever the case may be. So we need to be really observant about that, and we also, like I said, we need to make sure that we build something in, that we safeguard those facility reserves. Fortunately, in the last three, four years, the Budget Committee and the council hasn't really tapped into that for other purposes, so that's been a good thing. But I think I had, I guess that was it. Like I said, George and Claire asked the questions that I had. Thank you.
So we have three people signed up for round two. Before that, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. One is, I'm hoping that as we think about wherever it is, that we were thinking about really flexible space and how it can be internally moved and shifted over time, if that's what the needs call for, instead of the more stationary way that our current, our previously current building... The other thing that I've been thinking a lot about, and I don't know that you want to pull in some people to help you think about it, but I put this to staff, I've talked to staff a little about it, and I've talked to some of you about it, but I'm hoping the subcommittee can really think about this, too, and the rest of you. I went over to the integrated, new Integrated Science Building at the university where they really try to, have tried to think outside the box about crossing silos of different parts of the university and creating working spaces where that can happen. And so I'm, there's something about this, I think this is an opportunity for us to think a little differently than we do traditionally in terms of moving departments, and especially if you're thinking about having to phase in, how could you create spaces that could be used cross-departmentally in very creative ways that would help us do more with what we've got? And so I don't know how you pursue that question, but I think it's a really important one, because I think we will think in traditional ways unless somebody helps us think in non-traditional ways. There may be a part in this whole process we're going to go through where we have much more capacity than we're thinking we have, because we're thinking of it in spaces for departments, as opposed to how we might work differently as an organization. And I just want to challenge you all to look for that, and maybe there's some folks that have done some of that thinking at the university that could really help us think about that. Because I think the tendency is to think small because we don't have a lot of money, and I just wanted to challenge us to think big, just differently, and think of it in kind of an evolutionary way, too. So I just wanted to put that out there. And the other thing about the E-Web site that I was thinking about is maybe some of the pre-work that could be done has to, and I don't know how you put this in order, but sort of like, if we head in that direction, what would you be willing to do? Because would you be willing as E-Web, because frankly, I'm not willing for us to go over there and be a subset of E-Web. So I want to know what they would be willing to do to make it be the way that we would feel comfortable with. So I think that's another question to try to prep up in front and get some answers for us to, what are the questions we need answered before we can even get to that values discussion, maybe, right? Okay, so round two, Alan.
Yeah, I think that's a very important question. One of the issues I have with the E-Web site is, are we just a subset of E-Web, and does that always be perceived as E-Web? Or how do you create it being the civic center that people talk about, and how does that actually get implemented? So that's a very important question. That goes to some of these value questions about identity and things like that, about stewardship. And also, one of the things that we discussed in the committee was how the public interfaces face-to-face with the city, and how that's changed over time, and how actually little interaction with the city on a face-to-face basis there is. And what's that going to look like over time is another important discussion. It's also important, as George mentioned, I think you want to look at this, we want to look at this as a 50 to 100, not just a 50-year building, but a 100-year building about that. We've had this tradition about every 50 years come out with a new city hall, but maybe we should break that cycle and think about 100 years. And how do we deal with, the other important question I think we need to deal with is consolidation now or later? That's an important one of how we move forward. If we do it now, then we have to figure out a funding strategy about how to come up with another $30 million. And then in terms of site preference, where, how, and how flexible the expansion for that future is different in each one of these three things, and that we haven't really talked about that that much. And then finally, I think, one of the things I'd like to hear from you other folks, not on the committee, is how do we deal with these subjective values discussion? We haven't gotten that far in our conversations because we kind of stopped because we didn't exactly know how far you wanted us to go and that. I mean, we could sketch out these values more than we've already done with just these simple bullets, or do something else with it, but it's, that was a conversation we felt best left at this group. But what is it that the committee can do to help facilitate that would be another question that I'd like to hear from the group about.
Pat?
Thank you. Thanks, Alan. Pretty well stated from the committee point of view. A couple of things to point out is that if being downtown is one of the values that's going to be discussed December 12th or subsequent to December 12th, I'd like to think about the long-range view of what is downtown. And for those of us who may be isolated in certain parts of Eugene, downtown may seem like just a few square blocks. But in reality, as we get, as we grow as a city, downtown is not going to be restricted by the Ferry Street Bridge, for instance, and we already have the federal courthouse over there. Other development is happening on the other side of the Ferry Street Bridge. So quite likely, in fact, most likely, in a few years, downtown will be considered much broader footprint than it's considered today. So the E-Web building, as we go through, as we or you go through the discussion, the E-Web building has to really be considered for the long term adjacent to downtown. It currently is only a few steps away, even though there is a motorway in between, it is currently only a few steps away. And whatever definition returning to the river may involve, whether it's bicycles or businesses, whatever it may be, returning to the river does definitely include moving downtown closer in that direction. So when we talk about values, if downtown's a value, well, I think both sides that we're looking at should be considered as a downtown or soon-to-be downtown location. Then I do have a, just a question regarding, actually, two, regarding park and funding. In response to Counselor Se...
Brett? There you go.
Counselor Se... Claire's question on parking. A lot of businesses complain about the fact that they can't expand their business because they can't accommodate parking rules for the city of Eugene, and we open ourselves up to quite a bit of criticism if we start talking about building a city hall without adhering to our own rules as far as parking is concerned. I'm not making any value statement on that, but it is certainly open to criticism when people say, "Well, I can't expand my business because I don't have enough parking to do so." Well, but you can expand city hall, or you can build city hall without planning parking as a part of it. And I... Go ahead.
I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that we're not going to address parking, because we definitely will, but when we gave that assignment to the two teams in the, you know, the citizen advisory group, that's what they were tasked with, and that portion of it wasn't included. Mike, if you have anything to add? I just don't want to leave anybody with the impression we're not going to address parking because we won't.
I doubted that you would have that. The other thing is regarding the $2 million from telecom, is that $2 million on hand or $2 million speculated based upon legal action?
I believe it's on hand.
It is on hand. Thank you.
So we have 15 minutes to wrap this up. You have to respond to specific tasks for final subcommittee meeting that you want, and questions about public forum. And I have Mike and Chris and Betty and George Poling in the queues, so I'm just trying to get you to think in terms of the time constraints that we have. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Due to a family issue, I have to leave here early again today, so that's why I'm going to delve into a couple of those other issues, just to respond and say some things that were brought up here and hope to help the process of the discussion along a little farther. One of the issues around the current site expansion questions, and Alan touched on this, is that there are some other kind of lingering questions that come up as difficulties or issues. For example, the parking piece is there, but if we're going to look at this as long-term expansion, we have to use the parking across the street, has been presented as a potential part of, you know, building, some parts of the building across the street and some parts on the current site. And the reason is, if you're going to build it all vertically, then the basic stuff that you have to build at first has to be much differently configured than it is in the current plans and be more expensive. One of the other issues I brought up during the meeting was, we expect a number, you know, private industry to adhere to a certain number of criteria when they build in the general area. For example, there's the issue of not PAT FAR, but the issue of FAR and Florida area ratio, which is considerably higher for private folks than it would be for us under the current plans that we're talking about, and we may have some, we may face some issues of criticism over that, I would think. With this site and the future expansion pieces, there's certainly the possibility here, but we get into, as Alan said, a discussion about the financing that becomes challenging. I would urge my colleagues to consider that a bond of any nature would be a very difficult sell under current circumstances for the city hall's purposes. I think the general public would view that as something for us rather than something for them, and I don't think that's a very good idea. I don't think we should ask the question of bonding. When we had this discussion at the subcommittee level, we, Mayor, I did bring up the things that you mentioned about workspace as well, and I appreciated your email on that. We didn't come up with a way to integrate that into the process, but we did bring it up and talk about it. One of our chief goals was to get from you guys today, what is it that you need from the subcommittee to make a decision, or a different piece of criteria that we may not have touched on? One of the things that hasn't been brought up here is a part of the larger vision question, which is opportunity cost as well. If E-Web moves and we don't move into that, what does that become? If we do, what could we do with the current property? Just the consequences of our decision as a part of the discussion, too. So, thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, actually, this is a response that actually begins to tie into the second question, because it's an idea that you may want to consider for how we can help you. And the response is the notion that this is, that our job is not going to be choosing between good values and bad values. It's going to wind up being choosing between competing values that are generally all positive. Most everything we've talked about at this table has involved a value that in its own right is positive and good for the community. The challenge, though, is that this value down this road is actually competing with this value on this road, and we will have to choose one. So the discussion will not be, oh, this is easy, this is a bad way to go and this is a good way to go. It'll be, they're both good ways to go, which one do we want to choose? So the notion is, could the subcommittee help by identifying what those competing values are? In other words, where are the points of conflict between the different values that are involved here? We have a whole list of them, and I can look at this, or we can look at this and say, it's pretty clear that this set of values going in this direction are going to directly compete with this set of values going in this direction. We don't want to make the choice on which way to go, but we want to tee up the conversation so the entire council can very clearly see what's at stake and what's competing. Because I think if we try to do that work in a work session, you'll spend the whole half of the work session deciding what those competing values are, and then having the conversation about which one to choose. It would, perhaps the committee could help not to decide which are the right ones, but which ones are in conflict? Which ones are most likely to collide? Which ones are most likely to be decision points that we have to work with?
Betty?
Thank you. I've been restraining because I thought we had to be confined to that first question, but that doesn't seem to be true.
No, I actually purposely said you need to move on to be talking about those other things.
Thank you. I think it's time for the entire council to discuss it rather than a subcommittee continuing. And I think it's time that we make, get, move rapidly toward a decision. We will just keep saying the same things over and over. As for public forum, I strongly urge us to have a public forum, and we should go there with these three possibilities and wait for the public input to decide to go further about the details. And I hope that we can make a decision even before PAT leaves. I think there will always be changes, but it's time to decide what to do instead of camping out here, I think. Thank you.
Any question?
Uh, no.
How much she said? In a word? No.
After the meeting.
I'll put you on the list. George Poling?
Well, you know, in reviewing the values, I think they're, like Chris says, they're all very good. they're all very good, it's just that, at what point are they going to be competing against each other? Unfortunately, Pat, I don't have the crystal ball that you do about where the downtown is going to be, but to me, I think that it's important that we, as a city government, maintain the link or the relationship that we have with the current county government, which is this building, as well as what, in my opinion, I think is going to be the new downtown, is which is where you're seeing all the redevelopment going on. I think that by separating it by major roads out there, I think we're, to me, I get the feeling that perhaps we're going to be pulling the seat of city government away from the accessibility and from the vision that we have for downtown. You know, what we need to do is whatever we, wherever we decide as a council to build, is it needs to be built with our own identity, where we can say, this is the place, this is the seat of city government. This is where you go for your, your city business, this is where the community come to us as a council and say, these are our concerns, this is where we meet. I mean, you know, this is the seat of county government, and they've got a pretty nice facility. Granted, some of it was on our dime, but still, you know, we need to have something like this of our own. And I think that's, that's two important things that we need to look at.
And I've got Alan and George Brown. Oh, sorry, did I skip over you, Claire?
Don't worry.
Sorry, I don't have you on the second round yet.
That's fine.
Go ahead, Alan.
Me? Okay. I forget what I was going to ask. Oh, so, so when we go to a public forum, I get, the, for the public to be able to respond, they need to be informed about these three options, and I'm not quite sure there's enough there, there, to describe these three options enough for people, except for kind of a seat-of-the-pants kind of response. I like this, I don't like that, kind of input from the public. Unless we get, I'm kind of wondering if you think we have enough information to be able to bring that to a public forum for them to make substantive input to us about these three different options?
May I answer? Oh, thank you. I think.
Fine.
How come she got that?
But it's on Alan's 30 minutes.
It's on Alan's 30 minutes?
It's on your 30 minutes.
Your time's gone. It should be. I think there's, I think that we can fill in the details as, in response to what the public has to say about it. I, I don't think we should have three complete plans before we ask the public. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess the other question I'd still like to, I'm kind of getting the sense that what people want is the, the whole council to start this kind, continue the conversation here forward. I'm not sure that the subcommittee is going to be able to do a whole lot more, except maybe flesh out some of these things like FAR and parking and things like that. Maybe, maybe go as far as talk about the values and how they compete against each other for the different options, but, and maybe the question that I pose, which is, how and when you phase in, what does that look like? Because that's very different for the three. So there's, maybe in the next meeting we can cover those things, but I'm not sure we're going to get into the values conversation. I agree that that needs to occur here at this table and, and move along in that context. If we did have a public hearing, we have a December public hearing scheduled? Yeah. Forum?
A forum on the 10th, we could do that, the 10th of December.
George Brown?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think a public forum would be a good idea, because I get asked frequently, not every single day, but someone will come up and go, so what are you going to do, what are you guys going to do about city hall? And I just, I very quickly outline the three options that we're talking about, gives them something to think about. It's kind of out there, but you're right, the people don't really have a deep understanding of, of what the options are, and hopefully between now and that suggested date, people will, will be, you know, come up a little more to speed. Couple articles in The Guardian, I don't know, talk radio, TV, people, people I think will get a general idea, and they'll have an opinion one way or the other. I, you know, I'm looking over the, the system of value, the value sheet here, and they're all very good. I'm having a hard time seeing which ones are competing, and I, I don't know that we need to spend a heck of a lot of time going over the values. I think we just need to look at the financial information and the phasing information and I, you know, I don't know if the va, going over the values in any great detail is going to help us decide whether we want to be where we, where we were, or, you know, tear it down and start all over again, or, or the E-Web. And the E-Web thing, we don't know what E-Web's going to do. That's, this is why I don't, one of the reasons I don't favor that site. I don't believe that it's in the center of, you know, we're close to the center of downtown here. And, and it, over, I agree with Counselor Pauling, if we, if we move over there, we're going to be kind of isolated, tucked down in a corner and then a riverbank on a 100-yard flood plain. And I think it's a bad location, plus we don't even know what E-Web's going to do. Are they going to stay there? Are they going to move? Are they going to sell the property? I kind of hate to base any of our decisions based on what they may or may not do. And I think we, we can take control of the situation and make a decision on the site that we have, whether we want to knock it down and start all over again, or whether we want to do a creative destruction and rebuild of what's there. And I kind of favor that option, but I haven't really made up my mind yet, so, I don't know. I, I think if we spend too much time talking about the values, it's kind of sending us down a, they're important, and we should discuss them, but, but I think it's kind of sending us down a side path and delaying a decision.
You just didn't talk about values.
Well, my 3 minutes, I was going to make that same point.
Reality. I know, but values are reality.
So you obviously seem to value wanting the city hall to remain downtown. I personally think the E-Web site has a lot of potential, and the idea of having our city hall looking out onto our signature park of Alton Baker, you know, I think would speak well to our city in terms of our vision. So I think there, there is real value in talking about those kinds of trade-offs, because it would be a trade-off at this table, but I also think it's really important that we get the public to talk about that with us. And I think now that we are talking about this in a more concrete way, hopefully folks will start giving us some input on their thoughts about the Pearl Street site versus being along the river, a full rebuild versus reforming what we already have. I, I think we each maybe individually have our own opinions or feelings about where city hall should be and how it should look, but I would really like our decision to be informed by as much public input as possible. And along with that, I think there was, someone made a comment, it was Alan, about the public intersecting with the city very differently from the way they might have 15 years ago in terms of coming to an office or looking for services in person. So I think getting particular input from folks who do that on a regular basis, so folks who go to planning and development and have to deal with that, folks, contractors who deal with public works, and finding out from them, you know, what their thoughts, if they have any, on what that would mean for them, were we to consolidate everybody in one of these two sites or take some other action. So I think in terms of public input, that would be important, that those folks who are routinely contacting the city in person, we'd like to hear from them. And then I appreciated Counselor Clark mentioning that we would also want, maybe, not maybe as part of our decision-making, but once we've made the decision, to think about the consequences for if we did leave the Pearl Street site, you know, what would happen there afterwards, the consequences of the choices that we might make, I think is important. And I kind of appreciated what Counselor Pryor was suggesting, that the subcommittee might still suss out the values issue and maybe identify some potential places that would rise up there. Other than that, though, I agree, I don't see a lot of work that the subcommittee can still do. I think this really needs to come to council and to the public for a deeper discussion.
We need to wind this up now, so I think we heard forum. I think we heard more discussion around this table and maybe a little something still left for the
Little bit.
Subcommittee to do. And I guess the other piece, maybe is implied in what we said, is a real reality check on, on whether E-Web is ready to really offer something, or are we still waiting for them to? Because it, that's a decision you have to make about whether you want to wait longer for them to come to a place where they're ready to offer you something, or you want to really make this decision and move. And I think we need to tee that up very concretely as well.
We want certainty.
We want to head down that path and knock these off while listening to the public input. So just kind of that, and I think you've got it lined up this way, but my experience in something as serious as this is to us, that it does require a number of meetings and just sort of marching down the road, but, but very consistently marching down the road with specific goals for each meeting. We're going to knock off this, we're going to knock off this, we're going to get here and we're going to be, yeah, be going. So is there anything else that you, you need from us before we move on to the next discussion?
No, I think this conversation's been very helpful and it helped inform the next subcommittee meeting, and I think that we were thinking that was our last one, so we're, yeah.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on. And that would be financial strategy in the next 20 minutes or so. Jason's going to get the.
While we're loading up, we just have a couple of power points. I just want to set the stage briefly. As you know, over the last many years, we've spent a lot of time talking about budgets and finances, and we're going to spend a lot more time over the next couple of years. It's just, it's just the reality where we are. So really what we want to talk about today is just really start setting the stage and getting us back into that where we've been and where we're headed mode on the budget. And so it's really just a quick overview. As we move through the remainder of November and into December, there'll be several other work sessions on the budget, specifically as we talk about new revenue or potential new revenue strategies to go along with our budget discussions after the first of the year. Let's, oh, I got, I got that. I'm controlling it.
Are we ready, Dr. Iman?
Perfect. Just to remind you a little bit of where we've been, and remember, our basic philosophy hasn't changed when we've been talking about budgets. We've been trying to maintain community services, minimize layoffs, and create a stable budget. That hasn't changed for four years and it's not going to change as long as I'm here, sitting in this chair. And so that, that stays the same. What we, if we go back, as far back as fiscal year 2010, this is really when we started to feel the initial effects of the recession. We started off with a $12 million gap in our general fund, and just to have some context for that, our general fund runs plus or minus $120 to $125 million. So 12% represents, or 12 million represents about 10% of that. And you might remember, we've done a lot of things. We focused a lot on controlling costs. We've said all along, we need to shrink our organizational footprint. We've been trying to be very creative in allocating cost to the proper funds, and we went through that first $12 million, maintaining services in a good way. We did reduce our footprint, but we didn't lay employees off, and then we are continuing to move towards a, a stable budget. From the very beginning, we've talked about one-time versus ongoing expenses and the importance of that and how that plays into this. As we move into FY11, you might remember, there's another, an additional $5.7 million gap. We went through a, a process of really reducing our program costs, a lot of efficiencies, a lot of creativity inside the organization, looking for new partnerships. And then we started, as we went into 2012, again, another reduction, and then this current year, as we moved into 2013, we anticipated a $7 million gap, and we said we're going to take that in two chunks. We'd do the first $4 million in the current budget, and then we're going to pick up the next $3 million in the next budget. We'll have our general fund forecast, is that next week?
26th.
On the 26th. I'll just tell you, it's going to be more than $5 million. The gap is growing. And so the, and, and the, and even though we have been consistently driving down costs, the revenue, particularly in the property tax, is not recovering as fast as we had hoped and then faster than we anticipated. And so we are going to have a, see a bigger gap. So we're still going to have some challenging discussions as we move forward. But the good news is, is we've been able to get through it the last four years, and we're going to get through it again this year, and we'll figure that out. One of the important pieces that we've also said, in addition to working through our budget and maintaining a stable budget, we want to continue to invest in the goals that the council has set for the community. Public safety is a good example of that. We've added police officers downtown, we've added additional jail beds, the 300 Country Club, new facility for police headquarters, the fire merger's underway, and so we are still continuing to invest in our public safety footprint. Downtown Eugene, as I wander around and talk to people, people talk about there's a palpable downtown buzz that's, has more than has gone on in years and years. There's a lot of activity, the work that you've done at the council table, we filled pits, we have businesses coming in, and all of that's making a significant difference, and we're continuing to invest. Our Economic Prosperity Plan, which is a joint elected officials' plan, that was approved several years ago, there's work continuing on that, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute as we move forward. City Hall, we just talked about today, so we're continuing to invest in the downtown. And so we haven't gotten into a seize mentality and say, all we're going to do is continue to focus inward. We're dealing with inward financial stability, but we're also continuing to focus outward and into the community. And this is just a quick summary of what our six-year strategy has been and will continue to be for the next many years. Financial stewardship, we said, we need to continue to figure out how to live within our means. And the way we've been doing that is continuing to control costs and keeping the expenditure, the growth of expenditures down, and we also need to maintain an adequate and appropriate reserves. And partly the reason why we do that is it allows us to, time to transition into each year's budget as the gap continues to be there. It allows us time to move into that in a thoughtful way. We've also said economic prosperity is a key for us with the JEO plan. And we're continuing to invest in community goals, and we're continuing to control costs in a, in a variety of ways. All that will continue, and this year, we're talking about new revenues. And so when we present our budget, we will continue to find ways to shrink our footprint, continue to drive down costs, we're going to continue to invest in our community goals. On economic prosperity, we'll be talking about ways to increase the tax base. We're going to continue to try to maintain an adequate reserve and live within our means, and we're starting to have a conversation about new revenues. We believe that as we move forward, the way, from a stable budget perspective, new revenues needs to be a part of that conversation. It needs to be thoughtful, it needs to be appropriate, it needs to be in a, in a way that the community might be willing to move there, but it's an important conversation to have. So we're going to continue to do that. We'll focus on stability and then sustainability as we go forward with that. So really, our next steps, on the 26th, we'll get a forecast update from Sue and her team. We'll continue our conversations about revenues into December. Remember when we talked, was it in the spring or the summer, our budget strategies on the staff side? We are preparing, are prepared to prepare two different budgets. One of those will be if we have new revenue, one is if we don't. So there are going to be some decisions that we'll be asking the council to make over the next couple of months that will help inform that budget as we go forward. So, Mayor, that's just a really quick overview of where we're headed to kind of get us back in that conversation, and of course, we're here for any questions.
And I think we're going to have this discussion at our JEO meeting, but when we had our, talking about our United Front trip to Washington, and in the course of that conversation, there was expressed an interest in actually elevating a economic summit number two, which would bring federal partners into the discussion as well as our, our local partners. So we're going to be teaming that up to try to see if we can, I think. So, we're going to be teaming that up to try to see if we can, I think you'll get to see, as you have seen, a lot of the work that's been done, but then how we multiply that on, and then, of course, whatever strategies we're going to be willing to support at the local level as well. So, any questions? Yes, Claire?
I don't have questions so much as comments. One, I just wanted to take the opportunity that, to say, I really appreciated the message that you sent out about the contract settlement with Ask Me 1724 and the details that you shared there. I was very pleased to see that contract was settled in that way. It seemed to me a very flexible approach, creative, and really trying to be equitable with our city employees. So, I just wanted to thank you and the Ask Me bargaining team for coming to that agreement. And I'm also glad to see that we are putting the discussion of new revenues on our agenda. I know that's a very challenging conversation, but as the former chair of the Budget Committee, I can say it's a very necessary conversation if we're going to be responsible in terms of our duty to the city and thinking about how we can keep our city whole and healthy going forward. And then I just had a question. You were mentioning the JEO, which is the Joint Elected Officials?
Tomorrow.
And so-
The planning meeting tomorrow?
Is, there's been some conversation about revenues at that meeting, or how does that relate to our discussion? If that's whether the mayor or the city manager wants to answer it.
Tomorrow, I said tomorrow, but tomorrow's our planning meeting for the meeting, so we'll be talking about what's going to be on the agenda.
There's not, the JEO hasn't really talked about revenues itself. What the JEO, I think, is referencing back to that Joint Economic Prosperity Plan is a JEO plan. We've been working with that for three-plus years. It's the right time to kind of refresh that. And I think what the JEO talked about last time was, is a Summit 2.0. We had one a few years ago. It's the time to kind of refresh that and move forward with that. And so, that's the context, not so much a new revenue source coming out of that.
Okay. Thank you.
But it is, have you seen that, Claire, the plan, the summit, from the last summit?
I do not know. I don't think so.
We should, we should-
We'll make sure you, we can give that to you and be happy to talk and sit down with you on that.
And there's an update that goes with, there's an update that goes with that, with how much has been accomplished on it, too.
Okay.
So, it'll be, you have to speak. The other interesting thing that, and I'm going to call on you second, George. The other interesting thing that I heard this morning, you know, you may have read in the paper that Springfield has applied for a Bloomberg grant, and they are in the top 20 in the country for getting it. And the reason I bring that up is because their notion are mobile medical units, I'm sure they're working with Peace Health on that, and they're thinking of that as a strategy to take down some of our ambulance emergency service costs, that if you can send people out and not have it go to a hospital visit and take care of things, that way you can save a lot of dollars for our community. So, it's an interesting thing, and I look forward to seeing if they get it. If they don't, I think we should probably jointly looking at it and thinking about pursuing it anyway, because I think it's a strategy to help all of us manage our ambulance service costs. So, George?
Thanks. I would just curious, under the new revenue idea, does that kind of be revisiting the meeting the challenge materials that were compiled a few years ago, three or four years ago?
You know, that is a baseline and a foundation for some of the work. We will actually take the conversation really beyond that and be much more specific about some-
Some new ideas beyond that.
Yeah. So, some of the ideas could be, have contained in there, but I think it's, we're not going to just go back and review that as the discussion.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Mayor Piercey just mentioned the Bloomberg grant that Springfield applied for, and it looks pretty good for them at this point, based on what I've heard. And Mayor Lindbergh has said that she would absolutely, that the cities would actually be sharing the benefit of the grant, and it's pretty exciting about what that could lead to. But it points out something that really is, has to be a part of all budgeting for the future, and that's how do we coordinate all of our efforts even better than we have with our governmental partners in this building and across the freeway. And I think it's very essential, whether it be in public safety, currently in fire, we're working on working with Springfield, but we have to look at, from now and forever and ever, we have to look at how do we consolidate our services in order to provide the best possible outcome. And I think, I'm glad that Mayor Piercey brought up the first response or the ultimate service that's been considered in Springfield. If they don't get the grant, it's an avenue that we can approach to, in order to help Sue present a more balanced, easier balanced budget for the future. And you mentioned, John, as long as you're sitting in that chair, which I hope isn't a short period of time from this point forward.
Me either.
Depends on how happy he keeps you.
Living within our means, you've done a good job of doing that. And for the future, we have to really work very closely with our governmental partners to make that happen. And when you do the planning for the JEO meeting tomorrow, I'm anticipating that that will be a part of the discussion, particularly as it pertains to public safety and the challenges that we have ahead of us in terms of public safety.
Anything else? Anyone? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.